Last week, of course, some of you were here and we had a discussion about bullying and things in general. After the meeting was over, I was interviewed by a local TV channel. And I don't mind being interviewed, but the only problem I have with interviews are they edit out ninety percent of what you say. And I guess if you're trying to sell news or paper, no offense, Sean, that that happens. But Sean is very good at making sure that doesn't happen. But some of you may have seen that, but it kind of left the impression, because what I stated just, I don't think it might be precise words, but generally that, you know, bullying goes on in schools, but it also has gone on in schools and it's gone on for years and generations. And it goes on in society in general. And it's something that's not good and we don't want it, but in your workplaces, you know, you've seen it and it just, it happens. And that's how I kind of started off the conversation. Well, that's all that made the news. Because what I went on to say then after that was, but it's our responsibility as a school system to try to eliminate bullying as any way we can. And we have procedures and policies to do that. Does that mean we're going to be successful about one hundred percent of the time? Probably not, but that's our goal and, you know, if we aren't, we deal with it. But I stressed that, that, you know, it has gone on forever, but it shouldn't happen. And we're going to do what we can to try to prevent it from happening. That didn't make it. Then I went on to share the importance of students reporting bullying if it happens. Because, you know, we've heard that probably have too, and maybe it's been something, you know, the issue with you, your family. Where somebody does, is afraid to complain because they think they'll get in trouble. Or maybe some other, you know, it'll cause them more difficulties with other kids or maybe whoever it might be. But what I was telling the reporter is, you know, if someone at the school doesn't know that the bullying has occurred, then nobody's going to be able to do anything about it. So aside, you know, we want it not to occur and we want people to report it if it does. Now, if that means telling the teacher or the counselor, the principal, the school bus driver, whoever it might be, then we want you to report it. Now, for those, then I went on with talking with her, that in those instances where just somebody just doesn't feel comfortable doing that. Some kids are, you know, more shy or whatever, reluctant to do that. But we have here at the board office, if you go to our webpage, there's a hotline. You can call a number that's on our, you go to our webpage, you'll see a hotline number on there. And you can call in and do that anonymously. You don't have to identify yourself. You can identify the parties that you think are doing the bullying, the person. And any incidents that might have happened, you can share that and say what that is. And you don't have to give your name. And but if, and there's also on our webpage a link there, it's right on the front page. And the reporter, I even showed it to her, we thought her phone up and I said, just click on that. She did, and when she did, it brings up a little page where you fill out the information the same way. You don't have to identify yourself, but it gives you a way of saying, here, this is for not my school. Now, when those are generated, then they were, they come here to the central office. And at that point, Mr. Mick is going to talk about that here in a second. But then the schools or parties involved with that are then contacted to see, you know, here, we've got this anonymous tip for whatever reason. But like I, I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, you, some people will call directly to the board office. They'll call Mr. King, Mr. Mick Kiff, probably Dr. McCormick, a number of people here at the board office for the same reason, to report something. Maybe they've dealt with them in the schools or know them and they feel more comfortable talking to them. And that's perfectly fine too. But my point was that somebody needs to know about these things, okay? I just wanted to say that because it's troubled me ever since the other day when it seemed like that, you know, I was just saying it goes on and it's okay. But that was part of what I was trying to say. I got one more thing. I'll get to Mick here. The other point is this. We all have to be careful what we do as adults. Schools are micro, are microisms of society. And if we get on social media or if we do things in our interactions with other people, and we call people names or we bully people in many ways that go on, don't you think your kids and our kids don't see that? They see it and they see it every day. It goes on to the highest levels of our government, calling people names, saying things to people. You know, if young kids see that, then they think that's okay. That's the way our society works. And unfortunately, it's gotten worse, you know, over, I don't know how long, but over time. And I just urge everybody to use caution, you know, when you're on there. Of course, you know, we've all seen things that, profanities and whatever else, but, you know, kids see those things. And they're worse now, like Josh there, when I was his principal years ago. You know, things were said, but they weren't the kind of things that are said today. Weren't nearly, you know, vulgar type things that are stated and just take it for granted. It's okay to say these things. There were kids that were probably bullied then, I'm sure they were, but they were bullied in different ways. And I hope it wasn't as prevalent, but that goes on. But I'm going to get off my podium here or my, wherever it is. And Mr. Mick, you have our superintendent. I've asked Kim to just try to share, because once again, the complaint has to come in because we don't want these things. And I want Mr. Mick Kiff to kind of share with you what, how those things are dealt with and what our policy are, those kind of things.
Okay. State Board Policy forty-three seventy-three, as well as our local board's policy on bullying harassment, requires the place's responsibility of investigating any instances of bullying at the school level. With the building principal, assistant principal, that is their responsibility. There's rarely any instance that anything related to bullying harassment would make its way to board, unless it would be a request of an expulsion hearing, which again is very rare. Or it can come here in terms or form of an ALC placement. The principals have a lot of flexibility in how they handle and deal with these types of situations. Policy forty-three seventy-three spells out the consequences for bullying instances. And I think that's, that's all I have. I'm sorry.
Okay, now Jeff, this is a clarification. Now, some things that go on in schools, it's not always bullying, it could be other infractions also. But the principal may deal with those in a way up to, up to suspending somebody for ten days.
It could be suspension, it could be in school.
Okay, so this would be.
Class, class changes, class schedule changes.
The principal has discretion on all this, but my point is, or what I was trying to point, is they may only do that up to ten days.
Right.
So they could suspend somebody ten days. Now, if it's something that's more extreme, you know, I don't know what it might be, but if it's really a continuous problem or something of a very severe nature, what would the principal do then? If it's, they think it requires more than ten days suspension, what would they do?
And that would be a request for an alternative learning center placement here at the central office.
Okay, that, we use the term ALC and that's, I wondered if that's what that is. Okay, and that would come before a committee here at the school, who would be involved in that?
That would be Mr. Fisher, who is the person here that is responsible for our part of learning center. It's the building principal or assistant principal. At times it could be Dr. McCormick, Dr. Lowe, who could be involved in some of those areas as well, making, making those decisions.
And how long can they place a student in all the alternative learning center?
Forty-five days maximum.
Forty-five school days.
Right.
Okay, so, all right, so, but now, let's assume that there's even incidents that are more extreme than that. As some are still out of law, right?
Right.
Could you explain that to us, please?
So if it's an extreme situation, then at that point, the principal can request an ALC, or can request an expulsion hearing before the board. And that's the one instance where the board would be involved in this student.
And that could be to an, to expel from school?
For a period that up to a year.
I say it because I know last week we heard some things and a couple of those were familiar to us because we dealt with them. Now, if it ever gets to the point of where someone has been recommended to be acting like that, an expulsion hearing, that happens, that happens in private during executive session, the public, you know, student confidentiality here. So those are, they happen just with us and the parties involved. And we listen to the both sides of the arguments and then we eventually decide what we're going to do. But we have, unfortunately, had to expel kids for a year. Now, we don't vote on that in public. We voted on, that's the one time we can vote in private, otherwise we have to vote out in the open when we're in regular session. But for expulsion hearings, those are done privately with the parents and the faculty or administrators of the school. They're all, you know, they're both sides that present their arguments. We then deliberate without them in here. We ask them to go somewhere else and we talk it over and decide what we're going to do. And then when they come back in, if we feel that it's necessary that there, somebody needs to be expelled, then we actually vote in here and do that. And then we bring the parties back in, we share with them, here's what we've decided to do. And that's the end of it. Then we go back into regular session and we all, you know, we just advise the media that may be here that we end a student disciplinary hearing and that's all we say. So no one really knows what we've done. So although it's unfortunate, we have had to do that. But it's not something that's publicized because it's not supposed to be. We talk about students and it's their minors and there's confidential matters that the board has to do privately. And there are some things that are stated in law that we are required to expel kids from. There are certain things that the legislature's said, if a student is found guilty and they, they're spelled out in the law, if they are, if they find that they've done these things, you must expel them. It's just like a no brainer, we don't have any choice. If it's shown and it's proven to us that they did these things for certain categories of things, then they can be expelled or should have to be expelled. Other things, we have a little discretion. If we, maybe there's somebody that is a habitual, you know, time and time again has done certain things, then, and those aren't required to be expelled, but it would be up to our discretion, maybe we thought that might be necessary. Okay? Now, we do have a bullying and harassment policy, correct? And so these, all the schools are aware of those and any infractions they try to deal with.
Right.
But now, did you say that the principals do have some discretion on those?
Lots of discretion.
I know this, having been a principal before, different principals do things differently. Some are more strict, you know. You might have had a principal at school X over here and if something might have happened and they might have thought that was worthy of being suspended for three days. Over here at school Y, you had another principal and they were more hard-nosed. And they might have thought that warranted a eight day suspension. So it could be the same infraction and those two principals see things a little bit differently. But that, the law, the schools, the principal has the responsibility of running their schools by law. And that's why the authority is within. Now, Mr. Mick Kiff and his staff, if they were to think that something wasn't kosher, so to speak, they might talk with the principal to get their verdict, but ultimately, they have the authority to do those things by law. They, they do that. Now, if somebody was abusing that or wasn't living up to what they should be done, then that's when they possibly could face some kind of action from the, from Mr. Mick Kiff's office about their, how they perform their duties. But what we just wanted to do, first of all, redoing things, just let everybody know that there are laws there, that we want to, you know, we don't want this, we want it reported. And, you know, we will do our best to make sure that it's dealt with. Does he might have anything else?
I do.
Mr. Baker?
You've all, over the last several years, seen the big push to bring back locally controlled schools. You've seen that in the news, heard various politicians advocate for that. And that's kind of what Mr. Mick Kiff touched on earlier. When he said that the schools, the administrators at schools have a tremendous amount of control over the discipline or over the schools period, including discipline. Most of the time, now, I have two kids in Lincoln County High School, so I kind of have my finger on the pulse of things that happen over there more so than at other schools. But in the absence of one of my kids telling me or someone getting a hold of me, I rarely know of things that take place at school levels. There are, there are procedures. Mr. Presley touched on the website, the bullying hotline. But as a practical matter, and I'm not sure if people realize this, and as a practical matter, it's a three-step approach for anything. You go to your school administration. I know a lot of the complaints were about school administrators, not, not just other students. So if you're not happy with the discipline that you're aware of, and I'll touch on that in a moment, at the school level, then you need to make an appointment to speak to someone in superintendent's office. If that doesn't resolve your concerns, then do what a lot of you've done tonight. Get on the agenda, come to the board, say to us, we went through administration and we didn't get any help. We went, we met with the superintendent or the assistant superintendent or the central office staff, we didn't get any help. That's when you can come to us, and even though we can't vote on it, that's, at that point is when I can look at someone and say, why hasn't this been taken care of? Because until they had the opportunity at these levels, I don't have any authority even to ask them that question. The other thing I want to touch on, and it was touched on a little bit, is these privacy laws. We don't make these laws, we have to live by them. I don't agree with most of them. Every one of you that's had a child that has been bullied, if it were up to me, you would know exactly the punishment that was given to the child that did that, if it were up to me. But it's not because there are laws that prohibit us from talking about that. We can't talk about any discipline. Now, your, your children that are in school may notice that their aggressors are not in school, they may tell you about that. But I think it's fundamentally unfair. In the criminal system, you get to confront your accuser, you get to know what happens. In the school system, you don't, and that's not our doing, that's not anybody here's doing. That's your legislature, that's state and federal laws that prohibit us from talking about those things. I think if you were able to know some of the things that happen to these people, it would sit a lot better with you. But there's, we're just, I mean, our hands are tied, we can't talk about that. And I know as a parent, if I were in your situation and I didn't know what happened when my child was defenseless in a fight, didn't want to fight and got hit anyway with a group of kids standing around videoing it, I would want to know what happened to those kids. But we can't tell you about it because it violates privacy and then we get sued. And it's your tax money, but then goes to pay this person who bullied your child and gets a big check because we told things we weren't supposed to tell. So it's a very frustrating situation, but it's the legislators, the politicians that have the ability to change that, not us. That's, that's all I have, it's kind of impromptu, so I took up a lot of your time and I hope some of that's helpful to you and you remember some of it because I don't, you know, I hadn't seen some of the, one of the videos about one of the incidents that someone spoke about last week. I was able to look at that after the board meeting and it did sickening to me. Some of the others I'd seen and I was aware of, you know, it is always, it's, it's always gone on. I went through the school system here from head start through graduation at Guy Valley in nineteen eighty-seven. There was always aggression between people. We didn't talk about bullying back then, it wasn't a key word, but it's always gone on. It was controlled in different ways. I don't remember near the level of it. Can't remember four or five fights, period, at school, in my six years at Guy Valley, free middle school, free high school. We have that many on some days here across the county. I don't understand what the shift in society is. A lot of it are these things. You know, it, it blows my mind that you have a bathroom full of boys, stand there with their cell phones, the video of two people fighting. That, I do not understand that. It's almost like these kids want to fight for the attention they're going to get on social media. But anyway, I'm going to shut up now and let you all talk, sorry, thank you.
Mr. Presley, maybe you should advise, even though we expelled these kids for a long period of time, they still, we still have to furnish them an education.
Yes, like Mr. Curry said, we, that's, we're required to provide an education even if we expel students. Now, sometimes somebody might think, well, you know, that's what's with that, but we're required to. So we do it in different ways. ALC is one method, and once again, depends on what they've done and the infractions. Others, we provide hometown services. We've even had students that have, let's say, severe issues where we've had to place, place them in places out of state. But we have to provide the education, as Mr. Curry said. So just because you get expelled, or they get expelled, doesn't mean that, you know, we washed our hands of them. We still have to provide and oftentimes it'll be greater expensive if they were in school. But that's the cost of doing business. Okay, now, we're, we're going to let you all talk now, just a second. But what I would like to do, now, first, we have somebody who's signed in to speak and those of you who are here before know the rules. And I'm going to record this, so I told them I don't have to say it every time. But anybody, you know, we're having a business meeting here tonight. If you want to read our prelude here on our agenda, we're, you know, we have a business meeting at Lincoln County School. We're going to do various things. But that, but also, the public has a right to speak at any meeting we have. All we ask you to do is to come in before the meeting and sign this little pink sheet of paper and then you get to speak. Now, the only downside to that is since you aren't on our agenda, you, we can't talk back and forth. If you have had a question, we can't respond to you. But we listen to you, Mr. Mick Kiff, Mr. King, they, you know, they're taking notes as to what happened and we're ingesting it too, of course. But we just can't have any dialogue. But that's the open meetings law. This, this agenda goes out three days, workdays before we have a meeting. So the public knows what we're going to talk about. That's what it's all about. You might have something that you're interested in, you can go, starting on Thursdays when our agenda goes out, you can get on, so here's what they're going to talk about next week, or meeting the following Tuesday. So the public knows what we're going to talk about because of the meetings law, you have the right to know what we're going to talk about. And you do. But when somebody signs in, you know, they, oh, so that's reasonable, that's the statement way. Now, so in just a second, I'm going to name this person, but for all speakers, please note this. Please refrain from identifying other children. Now, that doesn't mean that if you file a complaint, that that child's name is not being stated to the principal or whoever it may be. Or if you do it anonymously, you can't state the student name that may, if there was another party involved. But for student confidentiality, I would ask you not to mention other people's names. Refer to the principal. That, that's not so much student confidentiality, it's more of a protection for yourself. I can't control what comes out of your mouth, but these things are recorded and there are slander laws and somebody can always come back and say, well, hey, they said this about me and it wasn't true and I'm going to sue them. But I, you know, it's often better to, you know, speaking, you know, you can talk about your child all you want to know. But don't, my advice to you is don't identify other kids and you're best off not identifying staff members. You can refer to them by their titles or something. But once again, you, you're able to identify them in a private setting when you file a complaint. If you haven't filed one, you can file it and you can state their names in, but at least it's not publicly stated right now. Okay, all that's done. So we've had one person sign in to speak tonight and that's Deborah Toppings.
Deidra.
Oh, I'm sorry. Deidra Toppings, and she wants to talk about bullying. Ms. Toppings?
So, it will be two weeks ago tomorrow, I got a call from the school, from the nurse. My child was sick, I needed to come pick him up. And I said, well, he was perfectly fine whenever he left this morning, what's going on? And she said, well, he came with a headache and then he was complaining that he didn't feel well. My child is on medication, so she thought that maybe he didn't eat before he took his medicine, which can make him nauseous. So she tried to get him to eat, he still didn't feel well. And then about thirty minutes later, I called back to check on him. I said, well, if he's not doing any better, I'll, I'll come pick him up, I'm not going to leave him at school sick. So when I called back, she told me that two other students went to a teacher and had told him that my child was threatened with a screwdriver. It took them two days to suspend this little boy or whatever they did to him, that he wasn't at school the next day. When my child came home, I asked if that child was at school, he said that he was at school all day long. My child doesn't want to go to school anymore because he's terrified that when this child comes back, he's going to hurt him. I mean, he threatened him with a screwdriver, that's a weapon. I should not have to worry every morning when I put my child on the bus that that could be the last time that I see my child. And this is, I was told this is not the first time that this child has done something like this to other students. My child will not stand up for himself, he will not tell me. He was choked last year in the bathroom until he turned blue. I didn't find out for three weeks because another parent told me. My child will not take up for himself, he won't tell anybody because he's scared of what they will do to him. And I just think there needs to be harsher punishment for these kids. They should have to go to some kind of behavioral program through the school or something. Because if their parents at home are not going to punish them when they get suspended or expelled or anything, it's not going to do any good when they come back. They're still going to do that same stuff over and over if they are not being corrected.
Thank you, Ms. Toppings. Once again, we can't really comment. So I'll just say thank you. I'd like to say more right now, but I won't. Okay, now, on our agenda, we have several people who contacted the board office prior to by Wednesday and spoke to Mr. McCann and got our agenda. So you may, you know, we're going to be talking, do what you want. The first person we have on our agenda are Katrina and Shayna Redman. They may come on right up here.
This is a sanction to what learned at the Duval pre-cake through administration ignoring parents, staff, and especially the cries for help from several students. A phone call, meeting or information is impossible to obtain from this school. As meetings are refused, administration, staff and students alike have bullied helpless students and parents. Apparently, the principal of the school has the final say on everything, even above the courts. I have been a victim myself as I was banned from my child's school activities and learning for standing up for my child. This is lost time of my child's life that I can never get back. If I need to pick up my child from school, I have to call a head of head so someone can walk her to my car. I have done absolutely nothing wrong for these actions to be imposed on me. My other child was bullied by the principal to the point that I had to transfer her to another school. There were several incidents that led her to feeling this way. I have volunteered within the school for more than three years until I was pushed out by unfair opinion and clicks within the group. It breaks my heart to see all the children that are ignored, ignored to the point that they decide not to take it anymore. Finally, and finally stand up for themselves and they are the ones who gets punished. After being bullied to the extent that they feel they have no other option. This is sad and something needs to be done now. So today, I come to you asking for help before something tragic becomes a reality. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
And go ahead, Reuben.
Hi, I'm Shayna Redman and I'm going to be speaking about bullying at Duval, one of Duval's schools. I want to start out by saying Duval was a place people wanted to be, but not, but now not anymore. I've been bullied by the same group of girls since fifth, sixth grade. For example, I helped this bully girl win seventh grade attendance. The group of girls that has been bullied, that's bullied me, who's running around, was running for, you know, seventh grade attendance. And when they found out about, about it, the leaders walked around and told the principal that, you know, I was bullying her and was going to egg her and throw her. And then she walks up, the leader walks up to me and goes, you really want seventh grade to look this bad with her representatives? And then went and told following. And when the principal brought me into her office to, you know, investigate, she told me I was lying and that she wanted the principal to always tell her the truth. I was suspended for five days for helping a bullied student. Here recently, my mother, Shayna Redman, was really banned from Duval. She isn't allowed to come to any of my home games, which means she is missing out on my middle school years, which is really important to me. Since basketball is already over, I just wanted to say that my principal made her unable to watch me play any. unable to watch me play any of my home games, which made me cry multiple different times. Especially, your best friend can't make it to any of your games. Now, another issue is the fighting. Being physically bullied and then standing up for yourself, which makes you the bad guy, now, how would you feel if you stood up for yourself, but then you got punched for it? My best friend gets bullied for her last name, and people call her bonerhead and stuff like that, it needs to stop. I'm tired of watching my best friend cry about her last name, so something needs to be done with the principal. I'm also getting bullied because of my sexuality, which hurts me more than anything else. Plus, before I told everybody I looked normal, but now I get them in looks and just eye rolls, nobody talks to me now. But I know if I go to tell someone about it, nobody will believe, even though the principal doesn't like my mother, which means the principal needs to take out on me, which hurts me just to go to school. I want this situation solved, so I can have the school we once had before. Thank you for your time.
Thank both of you for your comments. Now, these, some, at least some of these things you shared with have been complained about, for lack of a better word, is that correct, Miss Redman?
Yeah.
You filed a complaint about these things, am I correct?
I did. And nothing was done.
Okay. You filed a complaint about the incident at the school with the principal, or at the board office?
It's impossible to get a meeting with the principal. My husband's still waiting on a phone call back from September to meet with her, over all this.
Now, you stated that you weren't permitted to go to the school by the principal's excuse you were going there.
Right, and I have court papers saying that I am permitted, but I'm still not allowed.
Okay.
Which I sent those to you.
Well, all I saw was just a little bit of it, so I don't.
Well, you guys have it on file here.
Okay, well, I haven't seen it, just, all I saw was what you sent me, that's my part. But my quick, but your husband has not been excluded from going there, right?
No, he's not.
Okay.
But he's still waiting on a meeting to have.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to clarify. So even though you've been excluded from going there, he has not.
Right.
And he's tried to have a conference, and he hasn't been able to get one.
He, she said that he doesn't, that she has no reason to meet with him.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make, be clear. These are the kind of things we must know, as you said, we want to get into these things, but we have to know specific things. I know a little bit about your situation, but certainly, I don't know all of it. Okay? All right, good thanks. Okay, next, it's Bethany Kayla and Joshua Allen, bullying and other issues.
My wife's not here tonight, she had to, she just started a new job, and I didn't want her to have a negative impact on her evaluation.
Okay.
The biggest problems that I have, I brought my daughter with me to give y'all a little bit better first-person insight of what goes on in the school. Happy to see some of y'all familiar. The issues that I'm gonna go with you, to describe to you, I've talked to the school about, tried to go through the chain of command, and just like the lady before me, I've tried to have meetings with the main principal, and she will not talk to me. She will not talk to my wife, my wife's also come to the county school board, and my wife told me that she talked to, she didn't give me the name of the school board member down here, she said that Duval's a problematic school, and that's about as far as they could go with it. We've also called the state board's office, and last week, I got in touch with the governor's office. Because the biggest problem I have is, I can't go into great detail about, because of people law, my daughter has medical condition, and we're waiting on a pediatric GI, she's in and out of hospital all the time, that's about as far as I can go with it. It's even got to the point at times, her illness has where she's had to leave school, and the principal and members in the office or teachers will refuse to allow her to call home and either send her to the doctor or the hospital, or wherever it may be. Also have teachers and principal harassing my daughter about, well, are you gonna miss today, or, you know, what's wrong with you? And some of these teachers, not only including this year, but the previous years, this has went back for at least two years, they've wanted to know doctor's reports, they've wanted to know detailed information. There's two teachers down there, I'm not allowed to speak because of privacy issues, but I know who they are. They also talked to my previous wife, my daughter's biological mom, about what goes on in school with her. My ex-wife does not have custody of my daughter, she has not had custody ever since 2012, since before she started kindergarten. But oftentimes, they report back to her about, you know, her medical condition, or sometimes her attendance or anything else. My daughter's medical condition, she misses a lot of school, she's on a 504 plan, my wife and I spoke with Kevin Pritchard about this. And to make a long story short, the Title I teacher down there, it was my daughter's cross-country coach, she's a wonderful person. The assistant principal there, below, the main principal, you know, the main principal, the assistant principal, they were my math teachers, the same as you were my principal. I know them just as well as I do you. And I always try to have an open line of communication with them. I've always told all the teachers, I go at the beginning of the school year, I talk to the teachers, I talk to the staff, you know, whoever that she may have class with, if you guys call me in the middle of the night, eleven o'clock in the morning, I don't care if you guys get me out of bed or whatever, I have an open door policy with you. If there's an issue with my daughter, I wanna resolve it with you. I wanna do what I can to be as transparent with you, and, you know, try to make your job easier, because if there's a problem that goes on, I wanna be able to fix it before it becomes a problem. I believe anybody in here who's a parent would want that, you know, for their child. But the biggest problem I have with the school is, the main principal has went to the point, from what I've been told, allegedly, that they have tried to turn me in for trudely. This 504 plan that covers my daughter's medical condition, she's in the hospital from time to time, like I said, and everything else, causes her to miss school. It's had a problem, it's had such a big problem on her school attendance, that we've had to modify her schedule from a traditional school day, like any other kid goes in Lincoln County, to from eight a.m. to noon every day, because you only have one homeschool teacher for the entire county. That's what we were taught. So this was our best, you know, this was the best thing we could do for our scenario. And still have teachers, and also have the main principal giving my daughter problems about it.
Are you saying the 504 plan that was developed, is that what it states?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through, we tried to cover everything we can, I have doctors' excuses, everything else. Where she's had so many absences this year, the school was threatened, listening to everything else, talking about the principal, and Kevin Pritchard, the guy down here at the board's office, he knows, we have that open line of communication.
He's the attendance director.
Yes. I've tried to talk to the main principal about it, like these other parents, she don't wanna talk to me. The assistant principal, I can talk to her from time to time, I know she's busy, but at least she does try to work me in. But also, my daughter, she's told me that, at the beginning of the school year, the main principal's, the way she runs her school is, it's one of those, what happens at the school stays at the school. No telling parents, is it? I'll let you explain it to them later. Whether the students are sick or not, this doesn't just come from my daughter, but it also comes from other students, the way my daughter speaks, that sick or not, the principal tells students to stay at school, and she just, she, at times, she won't let her call home. And, let's see, there's also been some allegations about some teachers teasing students and others about sexuality, some LGBTQ jokes and everything else, and I know in this day and time, we're a little bit more open than what we used to be, you know, versus when I went to school. I mean, I'm not, and I don't think that, you know, from a student standpoint, a student's supposed to be there to learn. You're not supposed to be there to talk about somebody's sexual orientation or anything like that. That's a problem with me, that would be in the workplace. I mean, where I work, if you even mention that, your hind end's going to the office and you're fired, no questions asked. What is it? You can give them a better, you can give them a better understanding of what I'm saying.
Okay. There's this teacher that's been going on for a couple of years now, that's brought to you. She's been sending nudes to kids, and has not gotten fired or gotten in trouble. Miss Padgett's been over looking her, and then...
Don't mention that.
Sorry. The principal has been over looking her, and this other teacher that does not, no longer works there. He used to teach health, he taught everyone in sixth grade, too many details about anal. And about the what happens in school, stays in school, no telling parents, that happened in the beginning of the school, in the gym. She looked at me and a couple of other students directly while she was saying that, and it's gotten to the point now with the fights, that staff are watching and cheering them on, and won't do anything about it. And I've, with my absences, it's gone to the point where the principal says, well, you know, you can always live with my biological mother if you don't like, if I don't like it there at Duval. And then, there's always been teachers, where I used to have tenth period, they used to bully me about my biological mother, and, yeah.
I mean, what'd they say to you?
They used to bring up my uncle, which is in high school, and my biological mother, they used to talk about her, her other two kids, and how she's happier without me, and it just, it went so far that I would use to have to get home, 'cause I'd get sick.
Now, were these things reported to anyone, Josh?
We've tried to meet with the principal numerous occasions, and she will not meet with us, she will not speak with us. And anytime we've ever tried to talk to her about anything of this, her response is, I didn't know that was going on. She brushes it off.
Well, I mean, you know, it's clear that you're having difficulty meeting with the principal, I mean, that's clear. But I just wanted to see if any of these things that your daughter is saying, your, Bethany, right? Okay. That Bethany is saying, if anyone, if that's been shared with anyone, so I'm still not sure if it has or not.
We have, we've tried.
I know you've tried to, but I don't.
We attempted to do that. When you try to go down there and talk to somebody in that school as far as, you know, the principal, it's tighter for knocks. They don't wanna, they don't wanna speak to you about anything that goes on in the school. They wanna give you the impression that everything's all hunky-dory, it's rainbows and unicorns, and nothing like that goes on in our school.
It's gotten to the point now, mom tried to go talk to the principal the other day, and she stuck her head out the door, and she said that if she don't get off the property right now, that she's one to kick every, she's gonna kick her out.
Now, I heard some of these where you might, I mean, I could, that you try to get a, you know, I will meet with you tomorrow, or the day after, you know, in other words, you're flexible on when you wanna meet with her, and you still can't?
No. I'll try to call her and say, you know, do you have anything going on next week? I'm off on a long break, or I've got, you know, I've got three nights off or something like that, and she won't even get back to me.
If you run into a situation like that, Mr. McKeon, correct me if I'm wrong, if you would ask the principal to set up a date that we can meet, and she doesn't do that...
Yeah.
Could he call down here and get a meeting with Mr. King and the principal, or someone down here?
Okay.
So that you can meet with them, and if no one, somebody from the staff office can be there too.
Yeah. Cause I, it's just, when you try to talk to them down there, it's, they don't wanna talk to you. The assistant principal, she, I don't have any control over, you know, I'm not in the politics as far as the school system goes, but I prefer having the assistant principal be in the main principal, if it was my, nobody's, not everybody's gonna agree with me on that, and that's okay, we agree to disagree, but at least the assistant principal could work with you better. She's more, she's more direct with you, I mean, she can actually, she seems like she cares more, she actually tries to do her job.
Josh, are you saying this has happened from problem one, from the very beginning?
Yes. Absolutely.
Let's go back to the 504 plan and all. Now, the 504 plan stipulates the time of the day, or how long she, Bethany, you stated school, correct?
Yes.
And are you saying that, that either other teachers cause her, I don't know, whether her grades could be influenced, or somehow make derogatory remarks to her because she's not there all day long?
They make derogatory remarks, some of them in the past, and she could, that would be a perfect question to ask her too, but from what she's told me, they, they make comments like, I always gotta get your makeup work for you, why can't you just come to school and make my job easier? That's their mentality.
This one happened a couple, I think it was like a week or two ago. I missed because I had an ear infection, and I asked my teacher for my makeup work, 'cause it was not in the box. And she said, you know, you can always come in between classes, and then, I don't have in, I don't have time between classes, and I don't even have lunch. How am I supposed to come in between classes and get my makeup work? I go from eight a.m. to twelve p.m.
Like Mr. Curry said, you know, you always have the, you can always contact someone down here and share these same issues with them, or you could go to that webpage that I mentioned, or, you know, you can call down, and report these same type things, which eventually is gonna, you know, they're gonna come here and these people will be discussing. I think you'll find that the people here at the board office are gonna be receptive to talking to you. And like Mr. Curry said, it warranted, they're gonna set up a meeting and arrange for, you know, it's a time that's convenient for you and everyone else, so that that does take place, because some of these things are of a serious nature, and they need to get brought out and talked about.
I mean, my daughter, she, she goes to hospital and everything else, and there was at one time, we were supposed to send her Cincinnati, because we only have four pediatric GIs within, between West Virginia and Ohio, and I can't help, I'm not God, I can't put my hands on my, on my child and say, look, you know, I'm gonna take this, and, you know, put your illness upon me, if I could, I would. I'd donate my entire body to her and make sure she has a better life than I did, but any parent would. But I, I'm not, I'm not capable of doing that, but when my daughter comes home and she says, I ask her, you know, how, how's school, and when she's telling me about the teachers, some of the students do it from time to time, but it's mostly administrators, principals, stuff like that, giving her issues about this, and then making my life, I live, you get what I'm saying? I work twelve-hour shifts, I do what I can, I work, my wife works, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not expecting for a perfect world or anything else, but I at least like to be able to talk to this school, or at least now I can talk to you all, about how to fix this. It's, your job as a principal is to talk to your students, talk to your, talk to the parents and everything else, not just brush everything under the rug and hope it goes away. That's the problem we've had.
Let me give all of you, Mr. Doppings, a bit of practical, about something that we've forgotten in the age of immediate electronic communication. When you try to set up a meeting, do you do that by phone? You try to make the phone call and set up a meeting?
Oftentimes, yes.
Next time, send an email. You can access every employee of this board's email address.
Okay.
Send an email, and when you don't get a response within a day, send another.
Okay. I'll send you five days.
Two should be plenty, but when you don't get a response after two or three days, and you bring those emails, you call over here and you bring those emails to one of these gentlemen, I'll bet you you'll get an immediate response. If you don't, then you get on this agenda, and you bring those in here. You show me emails where you've tried to get help? Not that I don't believe everything you say.
Right.
But in a spoken conversation, there's always two sides to every story. When you've got a written documentation, your request can't be denied. You ask.
I wouldn't be down here talking to you tonight, with having a 504 plan, doing all my doctor's records and everything else, and having all my ducks in a row, and having trouble with the school specifically over this, whenever I know I'm in the raw, I wouldn't be down here talking to you if that wasn't a big case.
I'm just saying that, and I know this because of what I do for a living every day, a letter is worth a million phone calls, an email is worth a hundred thousand phone calls, because you have proof that I've tried to do this, and I'm a lawyer, I practice law for a living, and if I need to prove something, it's, I can use a letter. I might have ten phone calls, but when I'm finished, I send that letter or that email, because it's in writing, no one can dispute that it happened exactly the way you say it happened. There aren't two sides to that story when it's in writing. I encourage all of you, send those emails. That's why we have this wonderful email system. Send the emails, document your positions, and then, no one can say you didn't try.
Okay.
Not that they would, but.
Do all teachers have an email address? All, all of us have one.
Did you say your name's Bethany? Bethany, if you get your hands on a new picture of a teacher, take it straight home. Bethany, if you get your hands on a new picture of a teacher, take it straight home and show your parents. And anytime they tell you this is not to go to your parents, anything they tell you, write it down, word for word. Take it straight to your parents and they will bring it to Mr. Midkiff.
I told her specifically to do that, sorry to interrupt.
Take it, no, take it straight to your parents because that, that is not acceptable.
That happened years ago and I'm not going to tolerate that. It's, we're in a professional environment here and I know some, I know you have some people that don't ever get out of high school. Some of them never get out of elementary level and it's, when you're, when you're a teacher or staff member, whatever. You're not a construction worker on Facebook, on some kind of little meme page doing stuff like that. You're, you're an administrator. That's, that's uncalled for.
Well, we appreciate your comments and.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Justice, Justice.
Yes, ma'am. I don't directly have a student going to any of this school, but I do have grandchildren. And I do have a lot of, uh, children that, uh, I think a lot of. And a lot of kids, uh, when I'm saying this, uh, out there, they, they either refer to me as Papa or Uncle. Because I try to help the kids, okay? I got this one question I want to ask all of y'all. Do you know what the percentage is of bullying in the school? And I'm not talking about Lincoln County, I'm not talking about West Virginia, I am talking about the United States. Do you know what the percentage is? Sixty-six percent.
What do you mean by that? Sixty-six percent of kids are bullied or there's, there's a bullying?
Sixty-six percent of the kids is bullied in school. Now, that's a big percentage. If it was like twenty percent back when I was a kid, we took it out behind the schoolhouse and we took care of ourselves. But you can't do this this standing time. Then we let you. And, uh, you take the kids this standing time, yep. I'm going to use my granddaughter, she said, okay, I got bullied at this school. She goes to the principal or teacher, she's a rat, she's called a rat. And that goes through the school and they say, hey, I don't want nothing to do with you because you're a rat.
The other kids are saying that?
Yes. Now, how can we stop that?
That's a very good question you asked because you, it's one of those situations where there is no good answer. Because unless your granddaughter reports this bullying, nothing will be done about it because no one knows. When she reports it, if it's a specific incident and an admitted, a teacher, principal, assistant principal. Addresses that specific incident, the other students are going to know who complained. So I, I, I really, I just, I just don't know how, how you can, you can have your cake and eat it too in that situation.
I understand that.
I mean, and it's always been, I mean, I, as long as I've been around.
But I'm not just speaking for my granddaughter. I'm, I'm, I'm here tonight to, to do everything in my power to help all students in school. This girl, any, any kid, any kid.
Well, that's why we're here too.
Yeah.
The only thing I would add would be, uh, it is a form of bullying to begin to call this name calling again. So now, you know, we've, we've got additional bulliers, I guess, for lack of a better word. And those things can be reported and dealt with. And possibly by dealing with ones that are name calling, that you could at least slow down this name calling. When people do, uh, come forward, you know, and make allegations.
And I've noticed down through the years, with all the jobs and stuff I've worked on. If you notice the kids. The parents is bullies on their jobs. I worked with some guys, they was bullies on, on the job and come to find out their kids was bullies in school.
Their kid may get bullied at home.
That's right, so let me, let me say this, I might be out of order, but is there any way? That say, okay, I was in school when I got bullied. And I, and my parents noted about me bullying you, we'll use that for example, just between me and you, we're adults. And my parents wouldn't do nothing about it. The second time it happened, don't you think the parents should be pulled into the school? Has something done about it? Something, you, you understand what I'm saying?
I don't know the legalities of it all, whether we, that could be habit. You know, we've dealt with the student now, it's possible if, uh, it led, led on to, uh, truancy issues and things like that. The parent could get in trouble for that, or if it was shown that they were somehow instigating the student to do something maybe, you know. But our jurisdiction, you know, with the parent would be, you know, slimmer. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't go and file possibly a criminal complaint, probably you would know more about that than I. Uh, in the, with the court system to address that very same thing.
Because I mean, I was floored when I, when I got the percentage of sixty-six percent.
Well, the bed change, there's going to have to be a change at home. Yeah, but now we're going to have to put God back in our life.
Ever since we took God out of schools.
That's right.
We've had problems.
And the power.
Amen, I agree. That's my next thing I was going to say.
Sometimes I just say things when I don't mean to.
But I've been being, I've been being across the old desk several times and laying on me pretty hard. Sometimes it wasn't my fault, but sometimes it was. And I would say ninety-five percent of the time, yep, and there was a lot of them I missed, I should have got. And that's like at home, there was a lot of weapons I should have got at home and I didn't get it because.
Yeah, but that fear of that next one was as bad as actually getting it.
There you go.
Or the fear that if you got it at school, you're going to get it at home too.
What a fear, that was a guarantee.
But that's, that's what I've got, you know, that's what I wanted to say, you know, but I wanted.
Well, we understand.
But, uh, I mean, it's, my concern is, is not just my kids, it's all kids.
But see, we have a bullying and harassment policy, so it's, you know, they're both one in the same, uh, they overlap on others. But as we've said from the very beginning tonight, we've got to know or those, it has to be told. And if, if you don't feel comfortable doing it openly, then do it anonymously.
Now, my daughter was named on this paper tonight, but she had to work, couldn't be here.
What is her name, please?
Rhonda Vance.
This week, strike her.
Yeah, because she, she had to work tonight and couldn't be here.
All right, but you've kind of.
But it's probably a good thing.
You've probably expressed her somewhat, your views with her or her.
Thank you, it's all good.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, next is, uh, Beth Gross, uh, bullying, sexual harassment and civil rights case.
Well, thank you. I'm an old river rat, Guyan Valley. Drew was born and raised in Branchland, spent about ten years in San Diego and found my way back home. Some of you have known me my whole life and the rest of you probably know my family. But I'm here today to speak to you about my son who is an eighth grader at Guyan Valley Middle. He came home on the sixth of January visibly upset. I asked him how his day had gone, uh, said it had gone pretty poorly. I asked him to tell me what had happened because those of you who know Mason know he's a very jolly, happy, you know. Never seen him in a bad mood kind of kid. And, uh, he said with a quivering voice, mommy, I already had to tell Mrs. Davis. Please don't make me say it again. So I spoke with him for a bit and when he left the room, I tried to call the school, it was only about three thirty, no one answered. Following day, there was no class for weather and, uh, Wednesday I was there when the morning bell rang. During that period of time, I received no communication from the school of any kind. Um, I later found out there was no communication with the HHR at that time as well. Um, but the short of it, and Mr. King knows it could go on forever. But, uh, the short of it is my son has been, uh, since the beginning of the year. Dealing with ongoing se- largely sexual harassment. Um, he came out as homosexual about this time last year. Um, we kept it an at-home thing, not out of shame, but to give him a time to go through professional counseling. Prepare him for what was to come and to make sure he understood the things he was feeling and the things that were happening to him. And he wasn't misinterpreting those things, but I feel as a family, we handled those things very responsibly. And so, um, when I came in to that meeting on that Wednesday morning with the, uh, principal. Dean of Students and the counselor, everybody literally had glassy eyes. As they explained to me the things that had happened to my son, the things that had been said to my son. Things that no one in the room wanted to say out loud. And they actually wrote them on paper and showed them to me, just as I later did with Mr. Midkiff and Mr. King. Because I also didn't feel comfortable with the language and the things that they had said. Um, during the investigation of this at school, I was repeatedly, um. Repeatedly, um, told that there was no reason to disbelieve Mason's story. Everything that they had checked out, students they had talked with, their own experiences with him, they had no reason to disbelieve his reporting. Um, this is a kid who makes straight A's. Has absolutely no disciplinary record, not even detention, no disciplinary record. Um, some of you know, he was diagnosed with autism at fifteen months. And through some pretty fantastic early intervention and having a pretty tough old kid. He has absolutely exceeded all of our expectations. So even with what he has to overcome to do what he does, he goes to school every day. Facing this ongoing bullying and there aren't just words, there's touching, there's threats of touching. There's threats of assault. He still goes to school every day. I didn't know these things were happening because he didn't want me, you know. And he still goes to school every day and outperforms probably ninety-eight percent of his classmates. And he, um. I went through the appropriate reporting processes. I spoke with the school on multiple occasions. Because there were two primary aggressors in all of this. Um, early on, one of the two, his discipline was taken care of fairly quickly. Uh, from as best I can tell, he was at least given a ten day suspension. He has not been to school since the, you know, end of that ten day period, perhaps he's in ALC, I don't know. I just know he's not with my son every day, which is ult, which was ultimately my goal. Uh, the other young man is a slightly different story. Um, he is the guy at school. He's the athlete, he's Mr. Popularity. And this all happened on the dates that I gave you. Um, the, just a short time later, I think everybody here will know who I speak of. But there was an altercation after a Guyan Valley Hamlin basketball game in which this young man was involved. And I was actually told by the administration at Guyan Valley that my matter had been pushed to the back burner. Because this incident was in the public, it had public attention, people saw, people knew. People were demanding something to happen, so admittedly, they pushed us to the side to deal with that matter. Um, I do know, um, I can't say I know for what reason, but I do know the young man was out of school for five days. And I do know it had absolutely nothing to do with what happened with my son. We are now just a few days shy of a month since my son originally reported. And as best I know, because the young man's been in school every day, still wears his jersey every week. I assume it's been put to rest. I've had the administrator there tell me on two different occasions that she's taking care of it and the matter is done. But then I've also been told here at central office that data is still being collected. So where the truth lies in that, I'm not sure. I do, I will say this to back up though, because it's not just a right now issue. When he began school there in sixth grade, this was that administrator's first year at the school. Uh, as I mentioned, Ma- Mason is a special needs student. It was one of the first days of class and the teachers were sort of laying down the law in all of their rooms. And they were, one of the teachers was speaking about inappropriate language, words that would, would not be tolerated. So it was, everybody know the S word? Yes, ma'am. Everybody know the B word? Yes, ma'am. And that was sort of how she carried this out. Then she gets to the last one and she says, does anybody know the R word? And everybody's just sort of sat and looked at each other and didn't really know what she was getting at. She asked a few more times. She looks at my son, whose IEP she's had in hand for some time at that point. And she said, Mason, why don't you tell everybody what the R word is? So my son, as I'm told, it sort of rocked him back in his seat. He, he's also one of those kids, if a teacher tells you to do something, you do it, you know? And he said, well, the R word is retard. She said, well, Mason, what does that word mean? And he said, well, people use it to make fun of people, I guess, that aren't very smart. Or have, he knows the word diagnosis, he's mine. He said, or kids who have diagnosis, he said, so I guess they're dumb like me. This is my straight A student. Put in a position to make him feel like he was less than and he was stupid and he was the R word. I reached out to that principal that very day. I ne- I thought this was going to be a very easy conversation. To me, it seemed like the transgression was just obvious and just over the top. She began screaming at me over the phone that she was not going to take it up with her teacher. She didn't micromanage her teachers, there was nothing wrong with the behavior of that teacher. And anybody who knows me knows I'm real wordy, but I don't get loud. It's the only time I've ever raised my voice to a teacher, administrator of any kind. Literally got into a screaming match over the phone, which I ended up hanging up and terminating the call. Over the course of these three years, I've reached out to her several times about several different things, you never hear back. And over that period of time, her daughter and my Mason have become thick as thieves. So whenever I've had an issue or a problem, he always says, mom, just leave it alone, don't make a big deal. She's really one of my best friends and what if, you know, the principal gets mad and she can't be my friend anymore? What do you say to that? And so, as all of this has been coming out first, she says she's never received any attempt at correspondence. In any of this time, she actually went on to tell me, and we had this conversation two different times in the last month. That there were people at central office who were out to make her look bad. There were people who were, um, trying to, um, have her terminated. Because they wanted her position. That even people, staff within the school were colluding, you know. To just basically get her out and to make her look bad. I found it kind of a strange tale to be spun, but why she was sharing something like that with a parent was beyond me. And that was her excuse. I let her know that I was going to speak with Mr. King and with Mr. Midkiff because her answer to me was. They are the roadblock when I attempt to discipline. They are the ones who make it impossible for me to put kids in ALC or, you know. But the block was here. or, you know, that the block was here, that every time she made any attempt at any meaningful, um, in, you know, any meaningful, um, um, sorry guys, um, but the holdup was here. And anytime she attempted ALS placement, the, the brakes came over here. So basically it was, you know, I'm trying to save the school and everybody else is trying to sink it on my watch. Um, she, um, even went as far as to tell me, Mr. Midkiff and I have spoken about this, that she got the message from the top down, and these are my words, but essentially to stand down. And that she was told that any further disciplinary action that was needed in this matter would be handled by Mr. Midkiff in his office and his office alone. And she was to back away from the process. Um, there have been other instances where people have shared with me that they've also been told to stand down. And again, I don't know where all the truthfulness in that is, but all I can do is tell you what has been shared with me. Um, my goal here is not to leave anybody with, you know, a black eye or, you know, to start, um, I'm not here to start a war. I'm just simply here to make sure, one, that my child is protected, that my child receives justice, not vindication, just justice. And that he has ongoing protection. Um, I wish the mom in me could tell you the things that were said to him and the things that he was threatened with. But I just can't do it in a public forum. I just, I can't do it. And I've asked this administration, this is the big thing for sure, but for three years, I've, you know, tried to work with that administration, tried to kind of play ball, so to speak, not to be the loud parent, not to be that mom. And, you know, she's telling me, "It's handled, it's taken care of, that's it." But nothing's been, it's not taken care of, that's not it. You know, m- my oldest, when he was at Guyan Valley Middle, for two years, I warned them that there was something that was going to come to a physical, you know, blow up. My oldest is a first-year college student now. But for two years, I fought that fight with that administration. And nothing ever happened until the day finally came that he went to school and the young man caught him in the stairwell and cleaned his clock. Mr. Midkiff was here for that because I took much swifter action in that than I have in this. And that child was ultimately prosecuted. Um, you know, went through circuit court, the whole bit. Um, I have filed police reports against both of these young men. And the last that I spoke with the trooper who's handling it, um, and that's been a, a bit over a week ago, they've been out of county for the last week. It was shared with me that they were going to present charges, um, to prosecutor Gaypart for both boys each, account of harassment and battery. I was told that it fell just shy of assault. And, you know, Mr. Baker knows when you get to assault, you get to felonies. And they fell just short of her being able to make a felony case. But what I can't figure out is if these boys' transgressions are significant enough that law enforcement has taken them out, law enforcement is appalled by it, why is there no discipline with any teeth within the school for that young man? Mr. King will tell you that's the real short version, huh? But, but it, you know, in all, in all honesty, um, I know I can talk a lot and there are a lot of details that would take a long time to share with you here and I don't want to take all the time away from, you know, other, you know, other folks that are here and have their own concerns. Um, but, you know, the law says I have to send my children to school. Just as this gentleman here was talking about, if my child doesn't come to school, they're going to come knocking on my door and say, "Are they getting on the bus? Are you going to wear the cuffs?" But if I have to send my child to school, then somebody had better tell me that my child's not going to get sexually assaulted in the bathroom, that my child's going to come home, that he's going to come home. And, um, and I don't care to find a little spot in my notes and pass around and let you read some of the things that were said to him. Mr. Midkiff may have them with him, I'm not sure. Um, my kid, and I know everybody loves their kid, he's a good kid. And he represents this county beautifully. He's done legislative advocacy with me at the state and federal levels. Congressman McKinley had him design his Christmas card one year that went to every member of Congress, went to the president's office. And on the back at the bottom, it spoke a bit about Mason and in that, Lincoln County Schools, West Hamlin Elementary, remarkable, you know, all these different things. When he does advocacy with me, "Well, young man, where do you, where do you live? Where do you go to school?" You know, what better ambassador can you have? And I'm not saying the mi- kids who misbehave deserve it either, but when I've got a kid who absolutely turns the other cheek, stays out of the gutter, walks away. I mean, they even confirmed when they talked to these kids, "What does Mason do? He just walks away." Well, does he say anything? Does he do anything? No, he just gets up and walks away. Part of that makes me very proud of him, but part of that breaks my heart. And like I said, his safety and these, all these kids' safety is first and foremost. But justice comes a real quick second, a real close second. The comment was even made to me in discussing this matter here in the central office, "Well, at least you filed those charges, you've got that." Yeah, those kids deserve to face the judge for the things they've said and done. But they also deserve, that little boy should not be wearing a Guyan Valley jersey every week and representing our school when he's threatening to sexually assault my child. You won't find an educator, a parent, an administrator, you won't find one single one that will have one bad thing to say about him. All I hear all the time is if I had a classroom full of Masons or if we had a school full of Masons, my job would be so much easier. I've never had one negative phone call, disciplinary action, open house, feedback, nothing. I don't even check his live grades because I don't need to. I don't look at his live grades all grading period. I just come up when I know final grades have come out. So I've got a child who's doing everything you want him to do, everything the school wants him to do, everything his father and I want him to do. He finally spoke up and this is what happened. What is to encourage him to speak up again? Because he got dragged into the embarrassment of the sports situation and watching his classmates wear T-shirts about freeing this kid, so to speak. Would you want to go to school and see that? Would you want to go to school and watch everybody cheering the guy on that's threatened to do unspeakable things to you and has done? Like I said, it's gone beyond words. We're going to harassment and battery. Is that not enough for a disciplinary action? I'll stop now.
Well, you've stated it very well and we, Mr. Midkiff may share with us, uh, another time, more of the specifics that he and Mr. King are aware of. But, uh, we certainly have gotten the gist of what you've said and take it very seriously.
And may I also say this, when you said that, the, the principal at Guyan Valley told me, made it very, very clear that the entire situation had been laid out for both Mr. King and for Mr. Midkiff. I met with them separately and they were somewhat aware of the situation, but they both shared with me that none of the details that I had laid out for them, they were aware of none of those. So, you know, and these folks know what I'm talking about. If your next stop is your principal, but your principal's not...
I understand that you've laid out those details to them.
Yes.
That's what's necessary. Okay, I understand this is difficult, uh, but I also understand why you're doing this, you're standing up your boy and I admire you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Crystal Mitchell.
What a day I've had. Again, I'm the one that my son was punched in the face. And actually today, as I'm on the way to the hospital, because my brother was getting sent to, uh, Cleveland, I get a call that he was hit again in the bathroom. So I turned around and get back to the school just this evening and I said, "What happened?" She said, "Well, some kid came in and decided to dump on your son in the bathroom." I was like, "Oh, really?" Yeah, she's like, "Yeah." "When's it going to stop?" She said she initiated putting in a sign that said, "Two boys only in the restroom." So I asked, she said, "Him and another child was in there and this guy came in, hit him all up and down the shoulder, he pulled his sleeve up to show the principal when he went to the office." And, uh, she said, "Well, I want to talk to the other kids and see, you know, exactly what happened." It's a seventh grader this time. We don't have no classes with a seventh grader.
What time did this happen?
Um, she called me at three forty.
I mean, was it at school?
Yeah, today.
At school dismissed, was it at break time or?
There was switching classes.
Between classes?
Eighth and ninth.
Yeah, between eighth and ninth.
Eighth and ninth.
Were there, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Were there, uh, any staff, teachers, anyone, or were they present, uh, outside the restroom?
Uh, ISS teacher was standing there letting her kid go and I asked if anyone was in there. She said, "No, you can go." And I went in, then my Ethan came in, then that boy came in and hit me.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see.
Eighth and ninth period.
Had you had trouble with that boy before?
No. I never did talk to him. Not this particular kid, he's a seventh grader. And I said, "Well, where did this kid come out of the blue?" So the only thing I'm thinking is this initial, because Ryder doesn't ever fight back. He does it, because I've told my kids, "Don't go to school, don't fight, be good, do, you know, do what you're supposed to." You know, I said, "The only thing I can think of is that they have his number now and he's the kid that won't fight back, so we can dump on him. We can hit him, he's not going to tell." All school year, he's been picked on by this particular kid that I was down here last week for, um, which that kid started in fourth grade. And just on and on and on and I asked him, I said, "Ryder, why don't, why don't you tell?" You know, snitches get stitches. Mom, if we tell, we won't have any friends, you know, the typical back to the same old stuff. Now they're calling him the P-word at school. I could have took that hit better than you, you took it like a P, you know? So as it goes on, I tell my kids, I said, "Words, you know, name-calling is name-calling. No, it doesn't feel good." But that's ignorant of the parents, not teaching the children to be nice, don't use words like that, be, be nice, you know, don't, don't, don't try to be little to somebody else to make yourself feel better, you know, or bigger or whatever. So, like I said, you know, when I got that phone call, I mean, I was almost in Charleston, I was like, "Oh my God." And the call was Ryder's been in a fight. I said, "Do what?" She said, "Yeah, you need to come get him."
Who may have just called?
The, uh, secretary at the school, Devol. And, uh, so I turned around and I, I was like, "Well, I need to get here for my brother." I said, "Okay," I didn't have nobody. They said, "Can your husband?" I said, "Yeah, if you want to wait till six o'clock, he can get him," you know? So I turned and I go back and they just, you know, kind of act like it was no big deal. She said, "We'll talk to the kid and see what happened. There's a few other kids we need to question."
Now, that was the principal?
Yes, to me. She said, "I was aware that you didn't have time to talk to me." And I said, "No, I really don't." I said, "But did Ryder start this? Did he, you know, Ryder's never like an initiator, you know?" And I said, so she's like, "No, and this kid admitted, the kid admitted that he went in and hit Ryder three times." And I'm like, "Okay, did Ryder hit back?" She said, "No, he said he didn't hit back." Said Ryder just came out of the bathroom and, you know, and I, I'm just, but Ryder never tells because, you know, initially the chokeholds, they get hit between the, in the back, hitting in the back of the head, kicked multiple times. It always happens in the bathrooms or the stairwell. And I have asked fourth grade, but of course this year I didn't ask because I'd asked him if anything had been going on and he said, "No." Then after this incident of the video, I finally had proof, not that I like to see it and not that I condone kids from video and, but I finally had proof. And I said, and I asked him and he, he started crying and he said, "Yeah, Mom, this has been going on all year." I said, "Why didn't you tell me? I can't protect you and nobody can protect you unless you tell." And he says, "Because the kids at school are so mean, you know, they make fun of you for being a title tale" or whatever they call them, snitches now. So I said, "Ryder, you know, from this point on," I said, "I'm not going to be quiet." Because I don't want to be, like she said, "I don't want to be one of those parents." And multiple times, my kids have said, "Mom, this happened to me today, please don't call the school. Please don't call, don't say anything because it's going to be worse on us." So I don't, because I don't want to be the one to show my hind end because trust me, I can't, I mean, but I, so I sit back and I just, I constantly ask my kids, "Tell Mom, you know, did anything happen?" "No, Mom, no." But like I said, until this video came out, I never knew that this was going on this year. Fourth and fifth grade, I asked for a teacher to be put at the bathrooms during class changes, um, lunch breaks or lunch period because that's when it always seemed to happen. I said, "Just somebody or one of the, uh, parents that volunteers at school, somebody to be at that bathroom door so this doesn't happen." I mean, I know you can't stop it all, but at least that, you know, being hit, physically punched in the face. Um, my other son, his brother, he, uh, he's a, he's a twin, but of course he's only this tall, little, but he's a lot feistier. But initially, like I said, that same kid that we was down here last week over, hit his head off the bathroom sink when he was washing his hands. He didn't tell me either, this was fifth grade. And I said, "Hey," I combed his hair back out of his face, but he has longer hair and I pushed it back, talking to him and I said, "Oh my gosh, what happened to your forehead?" He said, "Oh, nothing, Mom, nothing." Combed his hair back out. And I said, "No, sweetheart," I said, "What happened to your head?" He said, "Well, you know that boy always picks on Ryder." I said, "Yeah." He said, "Um, I was washing my hands" and he said, "He comes up behind me and takes my head and just bounces it off the sink." I said, "Really?" So I called the principal midway at the time. She says, "Well, you know, there's not really nothing I can do about it now in case he didn't report it when it happened." I said, "Are you serious?" I said, "Why can't you do something about this? Why can't you at least call the kid in, talk to him, you know, clear this up?" I said, "You know, there has to be some kind of, some kind of disciplinary something." And she said, "Well, it wasn't reported. I'll talk to him then." Okay. And it, I mean, it's just been an ongoing thing. And like I said, you can't stop the name-calling. I just tell my children, "Let it go in one ear, out the other, don't pay attention to that, they've not been taught any better." You know, I tell them not to name-call, I tell them not to make fun of people. It takes all kinds to make this world go round, it is what it is, you know? Just treat people the way you want to be treated. And again, like I said, he's a big teddy bear kind, he don't fight back. You know, he just, he's a, he is, he is a pushover, I'll admit that. He's my son, but he is a pushover. But I have told him since his incidents, I was like, "Wear him out." I said, "At this point," I said, "If they continue," but again, today, this happened, he didn't do anything. And I know he won't, you know, but even though I've told him, I don't condone fighting by no means. I do not. But I said, "From now on, Ryder," I said, "if they hit you, fight back." I said, "Because they, they've got your number now and they know you won't fight back. So fight back. I don't care if you get kicked out at this point, you know, fight back." But then like I said again, phone call this evening, he never fought back. I mean, you know, and it, it happened in the bathroom. I said, "Where did this happen?" He said, "In the bathroom." I said, "Oh, wow, again, huh?" He said, "Yeah." So I said, "Uh, who was in there with, with you?" And he told me and I said, and, uh, when I spoke to her, she said, "Well, I have, I'm going to be talking to that child." So I said, "Who was in there with, with you?" And he told me and I said, and when I spoke to her, she said, "Well, I have, I'm gonna be talking to that child to see exactly what happened." I said, "Go ahead, talk." I mean, I just, it's, I mean, there was bullying when I was in school, I mean, where I grew up, where I'm from, you know? Some of those girls, they did. I wasn't a part of it. I separated myself from that, even though they were my neighbors. I separated myself from that because I didn't wanna be a part of that. So I never could understand the bullying. I never, I never could understand why somebody'd wanna belittle someone else, make them feel beneath them or less of a person. So again, you know, I've always taught my children that, so I guess that's why they don't fight back. They just kinda, they're passive. They let go, you know? This initial incident and today proved that it's not gonna stop. It went up to a seventh grader coming in and hitting him. So what's next week, is it gonna be an eighth grader? I mean, do I have to take my kids out of school?
He's the better person, though.
That's what I tell him. I said, "You know," I said, "Just Ryder," I said, "Honey, just don't," I said, "Just," I mean, like I said, I feel too, it goes back to home. Don't know what these kids are dealing with at home, better boys, you know? Maybe that's their out. They can't, you know, they can't fight back at home because whoever's doing what. So they take it to the school to find somebody that they're, they can bully, somebody they can push over because it's being done to them. I don't know.
Yeah, but you didn't raise your child to be someone else's victim because they're being victimized.
That's true.
You, you don't, I mean, that's.
That's true, but I don't, I don't want, I don't want my son to be afraid to go to school. And my middle one, last week, I kept him out today because he begged me not to go to school, his brother. He said, "Please, Mom, because it's one around school, the kids got their phone taken, they're gonna beat us up." He said, "Please don't make me go back. Those kids are coming back to school and they got their phones taken and was kicked out for a couple of days." So I thought he'd stay home Wednesday. He begged Monday, Tuesday, and finally Wednesday, I said, "Okay." He was in tears. He said, "Please, Mom." I said, "Okay, stay home today." I said, "Regroup. We'll talk about things all day because I'm usually off on Wednesdays." I said, "Stay home, stay with Mom. We'll talk about things. You can regroup and get back Thursday." Okay, so he did. He got up, went back to school, but he says, "Mom," he says, "the name-calling's unbelievable." I said, "Like I said, Casey, one ear and not the other. Don't pay him any mind. You're a better person. You're a bigger person to bully for that."
I understand that the incident today, that the boy that did this has admitted doing it?
Yeah, he, he did admit. He, he did admit it finally, you know, I mean, he did admit it. But this particular boy's actually been in, I've heard, three fights this year.
That was my next question. Are the, are the same, um, boys, I'm assuming it's Michigan boys here, are the same ones that continue to do this or is there different boys involved?
This particular one last week that almost knocked him out in the bathroom has been doing it since fourth grade.
I mean.
Today was the first time he, he says, that boy flipped him at the beginning of the school year with a rubber band.
The dates?
This boy today. For the seventh grader. This other child is a sixth grader that has been continuously on Ryder's, you know?
But now have all of these times of the continuous part of it, has that all of those been reported or not all of them?
No, because I didn't know this year. Now in fourth and fifth grade I did, but this year I knew nothing because he led on like nothing was happening. I kept noticing, you know, we have horses, we have dirt bikes, we have ATV, I mean, we, we camp, we ride, we're always doing things. My son here has lost interest in going to the barn. I mean, he'd come home, wanna go to bed. I said, "What's wrong, Ryder?" "Nothing." I said, "You only go to the barn enough?" "No, I don't wanna go." He's became withdrawn and now I know why because, I mean, he dealing what he deals with on a daily basis at school, you know?
Mr. Medkiff, in a case like this where the boy admitted, is that go on that boy's record?
Yeah.
Every time that he does bullying that is reported, it should be on his record.
Correct. It is.
Okay.
And this last, that, that was this, the seventh grader today.
Yes.
The one last week's incident or week before last.
Yeah, but the seventh grader be dumped before, it should be on his record.
Yeah. So this, the last week's incident or week before last, I'm just clouding right now. That kid, like I said, I don't know, but I have spoke to several other parents, that this particular boy has bullied their child, you know? And they seem to always be bigger boys. I mean, he's five-six and a hundred eighty-five pounds. This other kid has also, one in particular is a twin too, but they're kinda like my boys, one's bigger, one's smaller. He picks on the bigger one because that boy's passive as well. Of course, when I called that parent, he said, "Oh, my God, has my, my son been bullying yours?" I said, "No, no," he said, "because I've told him if somebody bullies him, clean your clock." I said, "No, no, I'm just asking if this child, if your son was bullied by this child." He said, "Yeah," he said, "Oh, you're wrong." He said, "And I, I said, 'Have you said anything about it?' He said, "My son won't say anything." He said, "But I told him that don't take it, to take him out," you know, he said, "And eventually my son will get tired of it and he'll wear him out." And I said, "Well," I said, "It's kinda," I mean, I don't condone fighting, but it's pretty much where I've gotten with my son. I was like, "Well, Ryder will do anything about it? Maybe you should take care of it. Maybe he'll leave you alone. Maybe once you stand up and see that you're not gonna, you know, that you're not gonna sit here and take it, maybe." Not that I condone fighting by no means, but I'm tired of my kid getting thumped on all the time when he goes to school. Comes home, bruises. I mean, they've had bruises on him and I'm like, "God," I said, "How did you get that?" "Oh, nothing, Mom." You know, come to find out, he's come home with nosebleeds. Hmm, I'm just wondering if those were incident like, um, before last, you know, when he goes in and says, "I fell on the steps." Wonder if, wonder if he got hit, you know what I mean? Now, once I think back at all these incidents that he's came home and he's been hurt in the back or hitting the head or things like that, and he, he would say, "Oh, it's just some kid, just some kid." Well, have to come to find out, this some kid is this, this boy, this boy, you know? So I'm like, "Ryder, you have to tell me," you know? But like I said, until the video came out, he said he fell on the steps because he was told. Because this boy, he had a friend that took him down to the nurse and said, "You're gonna tell them that you fell on the steps." So what did Ryder do? I fell on his, I fell on his top of my face on the step. I was on the bottom step and I fell on his step. And my words to the nurse was, "Are you sure that that's what happened?" And she said, "Well, no, Crystal, I'm not sure. That's just what he said." And I said, "Okay," I said, "because they, both of my boys have been asking me for a couple of weeks. Now, Mom, if somebody hits us, are we to fight back?" And I'm like, "As long as you don't start it, yes." But then again, you know, me telling him to do it if somebody is mean to them, but again, you see, he doesn't do it. He just takes it and covers it up with, "I fell," you know? But until that video surfaced, I would've thought he fell on the steps, you know? I did take him to the doctor the next day because once I went to the school at seven AM, I was sitting there to talk to the principal. Some of the things she said I did not like, it was pretty much like, "Well, what do you want us to do?" "Oh, we put a paper up there. We stuck a note on the bathrooms that said, 'Two boys at a time.'" My other son comes home from school, you know, what he said? He said, "Mom," he said, "those, those kids up there read that and just laugh at it." He said, "You know, when another boy was in there using a restroom, another kid comes in and says to him, 'Casey, get out.'" And of course, if you know my Casey, he says, "Hey, man, I can't cut it off. It hurts." You know what I mean? That's just him. He's kinda sarcastic. He's funny. He said, "You're just gonna have to wait." So, I mean, like I said, he's, he's funny. So he continues to use restroom. Another child walks in, so at this time, four kids. And as he's leaving, one of the boys in there picks up another kid and slams him on the floor. I said, "Casey, did you go now?"
Was this, was there a teacher outside the door once again?
This incident, I had already picked him up.
Today.
This, today, he said, "An ISS teacher." But what I was telling you was last Friday, like this happened on Thursday.
At that time, was there a teacher out there?
He doesn't know. He wasn't, it wasn't him that was there, it was my other son. And when he came out, he said, "No, there wasn't anyone there." Because I said, "Well, where's the teachers that's supposed to be there?" He said, "There wasn't. There's just a sign up there that says, 'Two boys at a time.'" He said, "Like I said, Mom, you really think that they're gonna listen to that?" He said, "It..."
Now, there should be a staff member there.
Yes, there should be because I've asked for it. And then when I said to the principal at Duval, I said, "I have asked for this, you know, before, fourth and fifth grade." She said, "Well, you didn't ask for it this year."
You shouldn't have to ask for it.
And he even said that to me when I came down and spoke to it. He said, "Have you asked for it this year?" I said, "No, because I didn't think I had to."
Well, you shouldn't have to.
Right, because my kids shouldn't fear going to the restroom.
Well, and there are the times when students are unsupervised or when things happen.
Yeah, exactly. And that's why I'm asking for, because I'm really thinking that it will cut down on a lot if there's someone that does that because that's where it happens, the stairwells and the bathrooms.
During class times, during lunch times, whenever they aren't in the classroom, there should be someone assigned to the restroom.
Yes, and that's what I have asked for. I have asked for. Because I didn't wanna be the parent to be down here in this situation, you know? I didn't want to cause a stink. I didn't want to, you know, because trust me, I don't, I've always been one of those kids in school that I always kinda try to hide behind the kid in front of me because I didn't like attention drawn to me, you know? I'm just kinda like, so.
By doing that, it alleviates problems for everybody.
Yes, now, yeah.
Being bullied or them, but it also alleviates the problem for the administrators and teachers because they don't have to deal with it because it never happened. If there's someone there and that's when these things can happen.
Yes.
If there's somewhere in there monitoring that, if they're not gonna happen.
Right.
Everybody's better off.
That's what I said, you know, if kids are gonna bump each other walking down the hallway, I mean, it happens. I mean, the hallways are crowded, okay? But the bathrooms is where I really think that that needs to be a focal point.
You're right.
A focal point. Oh, and also, another thing I wanna add, um, like I said to Met and, yeah, the principal, him and this boy had had problems in fourth and fifth grade. I said, "Why should, if there's problems and they, they're at one school and there's issues and they go to Duval, from Midway to Duval, I think it should be reported to that school that there has previously been an incident so it can be looked at or pull him in and say, 'Hey, you know, is it, is everything going okay? Are you being bullied? Is he still bothering you?'" You know, that might be an idea to, to kinda put us there.
Part of the, uh, state system, it's called WIVAS and stuff. But any disciplinary action that happens at the school should be placed in that for students. That's why if it ever, things come before us, which they have at times. One of the things we'll wanna know is what's that student's disciplinary record? And it follows them from kindergarten on up, so if they've done something in any grade level, uh, by, or whatever, bullying, harassment, those things should have been placed in the, the WIVAS system. And when I pull up that individual child, I can see things that they may have done throughout their whole twelve years in school. And, and that also should spur the principal on or whoever's doing the discipline action that, you know, this is a continuous thing. You, you know, it's not just an isolated time. You got in one fight one time and we're gonna do it over and over and over again. So that means it's progressive and maybe the action needs to be sterner on my part.
Yeah. So, but in fifth grade, like I said, all this initially happened in the restroom and stuff like that. He says, after he does things, he runs into the hallway. Once again, I told my son, I said, "Go tell somebody. Mom, we tell them. They just say, 'Get to class, get to class.'"
Well, for someone outside that door, it's much easier.
Yes, exactly. So at this point, after this continued to happen, and then I went forcefully, I went over there and I said, "Put somebody." I said, "Put this particular teacher, which is my neighbor. He lives four houses down the road from me. He's been at Midway forever." I said, "Put him, put him there," you know? I said, "I'm sure he used to run around everywhere anyway, super nice guy. I said, 'Put him down there,' I said, "'to, to monitor the restroom or something.'" But incidents happened in the restroom. The boy left the restroom, took off out. Later that day, Ryder went out. The boy was not seen anymore, he said. Later that day, they was walking up the steps at Midway. They get to the top of the steps, the boy kicks Ryder in the back of the leg. Ryder just kinda, he says, he goes in, puts his books down there so you can come in, the lockers. He went in, turned, come back out this door. He said, "I did push him, Mom, because I thought about what you said." He said, "I didn't do it right at that instant, but I went in, put my books down, come out and I kinda pushed him and said, 'Don't kick me no more.'" Ryder said, he walks down the hallway, get ready, get back in classroom. He hears something, he looks up. Here comes the boy running at him. He says, "I go into classroom. The boy comes in and beats Ryder down the back of the neck and then the back of the head." So the principal pulls the footage and she said, "Well, it was actually Ryder this time." I said, "Really?" I said, "Why don't you back it on up a little bit and see what she backed the video on up and she saw where he did kick Ryder first." I said, she goes, "Well, I'm gonna give them both a day out." I said, "Really?" I said, "Even though this kid initially started this, I said, 'You're kicking Ryder out for, you know, putting his hands,'" which I tell them, "Keep their hands to themselves all the time. But also in that incident, he did kick you first, come back and settle it." So within just a few minutes there, this happened. Well, she, um, she kicked them both out and then she goes, "Well, and they left the office and one of them snickered. I don't know which one it was." Of course, it ended up being the other kid because some parent was there and they seen it and heard it. I said, "Okay," she says, "So I give them two days, two days apiece. It, it's done." I was like, "What's that gonna settle?" You know? I said, "This has been going on and I've asked you to put someone at the bathrooms and in the stairwells." At this point, I asked for somebody to be in the stairwell. I said, "That he was gonna initially just kick my son out until I, I said, 'Back it on up and see,' because he said he was kicked." So she did. She backed it up. She saw this boy kick him. He put his books down, come out. He did put his hands on him and says, "Leave me alone." And then the boy chased him down and beat him up and down back of the neck. So I'm, I'm just, please implement someone, please force the bathroom, stairwell. I know it's hard to control all that. I mean, you've got kids of all different backgrounds and stuff, but our kids shouldn't be afraid to go to school. Absolutely not. When Casey's standing there crying and saying, "Please, Mom, don't." You know, you think about pulling your kids out, but why should I pull my kids out unless the kids that are bullies be there and go on and be with their friends and things like that? And let my kids suffer by just, you know, staying home and not have that interaction with other children.
I think you, everyone up here totally agrees with you. And like I said before, the times when problems happen are the unsupervised times. So what we have to do is try to make sure they're supervised at all times. When they're in the classroom with the teacher there, you know, things happen there.
Sometimes the teachers go out and the chokehold incident, the teacher stepped out of the room.
Some things can happen there, but they're less likely to happen in the classroom during that.
Right, exactly.
But it's during these breaks and lunches and all of those.
Back in between class changes and lunch periods.
And stairwells. These are common. These are, yes, it's typical.
So, I mean, I said back when I was a kid, I mean, if they had a problem, they were, you know, my, my husband played football for Duval. I think he, he was there when he won the state championship and what was that, you want my, did you, did you ever mention? You know, back then, he was like, you know, threw down. Somebody had a problem, you took it outside of school, after school hours, and you took care of it and that was it, you know? Now, I mean, you can't do that. And I do second the paddling in school. I really, I mean, if I could vote on that, you could bring it back. I really think that that, God and paddling would help a lot. My nephew that my mom raised, got a paddle, even Jim, oh, sorry, bus dropper, back years ago. He would paddle him every day when he got off that bus. I'd have to stand and wait, let him lift him off his feet three to four times. Eventually, he, you know, respected not to get up on the bus, but, I mean, it took several times. He finally quit, but I do remember standing there thinking, "I don't want that."
Nobody else did, did they?
So, you know, I think in school, because now kids can't, they, there's no, you get kicked out, you're like on a mini-vacation. I mean, if you're, if the parents at home are not disciplinaries, it's like a mini-vacation, you know? And I, I just, you know, I wish some states had brought it back. I really wish they did here.
Thank you. No, let me say something. And this is gonna be very unpopular with a lot of people, but I, I looked into this a couple of weeks ago and found out that most of the school systems in the state of West Virginia have a zero tolerance policy, providing. It doesn't matter who starts a fight. It doesn't matter whether you defend yourself. Both students get expelled. Well, that's stupid and it's unconstitutional. Because under the Constitution of the United States, in West Virginia, you have a right to defend yourself. Now, a lot of the schools here in the county have a zero tolerance policy. I disagree with that, but I don't have any, any influence or control of what happens at school level. But if your child was ever truly, and, and let me tell you what your mistake was. When you got kicked, you walked away from the situation, you put your books down, you came back, you started something. When you came back pushed, had you turned around when that kid kicked you? Put your hands on him, said, "Don't do that again?" And your momma came over here and complained when you got suspended, there'd be at least one board member that would be loudly, loudly and often arguing that, "That's not right. You shouldn't have been punished. You have a right to defend yourself." So I don't advocate violence. Violence never helps anything. But to the extent any student in this county is picked on and defends themselves, and it has to be temporary. You can't go back and plan, "Well, that boy punched me. I'm gonna go back thirty minutes later and catch him and do this." That's, that's not defense.
Exactly what I said. I said, "You should've turned around and took him right then," but it was on the step. You're thinking, "Well, it could've been worse."
You have, you have a right to defend yourself, but now it's slippery slope because at some point you go from... point you go from defending yourself to being an aggressor.
Yeah.
And it can happen in a half second. And you, you run that risk, but you, you have a right to defend yourself. Every, every person has a right to defend themselves. Now, that may not be the policy of the school you attend, doesn't sound like it is, but you, you have, you have the right to speak to the administration here, and if that's not satisfactory, come to the board like you have tonight. Um, as I mentioned earlier, because of a lot of changes, the schools have a lot of control and discipline. They have the first say and even the administration sitting here can't do anything unless someone brings things their attention. And they're probably not going to step up and open the roll of the school administrator's decision so long as the, so long as it's consistent across the board, whether they agree or disagree with it. I'm not constrained by that. I can complain, I can talk to Mr. O'Donnell, you, I can complain about those things. I don't, I don't think they're right. I think that's a lot of the reason why we do have this level of bullying. And I know that going back to my own days, when that was a policy back in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, when I didn't defend myself in a fight because I didn't want to get, lose a chance of getting National Honor Society someday.
May I say something to that, please? I'm sorry. Because when I listen to her speak, it sounds like we parent our children very, very similarly and try to teach them very similar morals. And my son and I have had the very same conversation. He said, Mom, if I turn around and fight back, he's in eighth grade, I may lose my chance to be valedictorian. I may not get admitted in the National Honor Society. So he's stepping back as hard as it is and thinking about those things because if he defends himself, then he loses all the academic gain that he's made for himself. How fair is that?
It's not fair. And that, that's why I raised this issue. I didn't make any friends tonight at many levels by, by saying the things I've said because it's not the policy in most of our schools. I don't mean it's the policy at Guy Valley. Clearly, you all told me it's not the policy at Duval.
All I ask is just somebody be in the bathrooms and monitor the un, the, the areas that there's, there's no one there. I mean.
All right, I think.
I mean, if my kid does, I mean, do what you need to do. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty fair. I, I don't, I don't.
Still the better person.
I don't, I mean, if my son's done something, I'll be the first to, you know, punish him, do, I mean, whatever. I mean, I'm not, I'm not one of these moms that thinks that my kid does nothing wrong, put it that way. But, because we all know, I, I also kids, everyone's child's done something, you know? Does he always listen to me? No. But he has consequences, do you not? And I've always says, there's consequences for everything you do in this life. Whether it's good or bad, there's consequences and you need to think before you react. So, again, he says, Mom, my goal was, I was going to get through sixth grade and enjoy it and hope that he left me alone and I wouldn't get in trouble. I said, why did you not tell me? I can't help you. The principal can't help unless you bring this forward. You know, it goes back to friends, people making fun of me. And I was like, what? One ear now the other, come on, I mean, it is what it is.
Okay. I think everyone got in the gist of what everyone said here because we want to try to hear that. Let's listen to, uh, Misty Hager, please.
So, my child goes to Guy Valley Middle School and my child's gay. Um, my child was born female, um, and goes by male, in a male name. Um, there's been numerous things done to her and such to my childhood there and I want to make this clear that it wasn't an issue up there, um, of them calling her Paige or not Miles. The issue was whenever my kid says it's not Paige anymore, it's Miles, they punish my child for it. That was the issue because I'm her mom and even her dad, we are getting used to this and the fact that she now identifies as a boy. And we're getting used to it. We still say she and sometimes he, I don't have an issue with that. The issue is when you're telling my kid that they should have been gay. Um, there's been numerous things up there said, there's been, um, how do you think your parents feel? You're not a boy, you're a girl. Um, you need to stop acting like someone you're not. Um, whenever my kid got hit by a car last year, I was on crutches and had to go back to school with crutches, wasn't allowed to use the elevator. So my child had to use the stairs, which fell down the steps. So I then called over here, complained about it. Um, they did call the school up here and made her, made the prin, the principal aware of that, that, um, to allow the elevator to be used. And then, well, after that, my child got, um, suspended for something that happened two weeks prior to all of this, that originally the principal had spoken to my child, you know, saying, don't let it happen again. But once I called over here and complained, I got suspended for it. Um, I just have so much stuff on here. This has been going on for almost two years up there. And no matter how many times I call, beg, plead up there, nothing, nothing happens. Um, I've had a meeting up there due to my child writing the name Miles on a folder and I was told that my kid's confusing every kid in the school, um, for doing that. Um, hold on, I'll go. Um, my grandson passed away at six weeks old. And so Miles had a bracelet on in memory of him and had it in his mouth like this. And, yep, maybe you shouldn't have had it in his mouth. So I didn't have a problem with the principal saying, get it out of your mouth or taking it away, calling me whatever it may be. But no, she took it from my kid and threw it in the trash. And that was with my grandson, in memory of my grandson. Um, well, Miles tripped down the stairs on another kid's feet and rolled to the bottom. I had multiple parents, uh, messaging me to check on him. And, um, that was on Friday, so an ambulance was called, uh, to go and check him out, which I was okay with that. I got up there and he seemed fine, so I was like, am I going to take that ambulance? And we didn't go to hospital, he was fine. Um, Monday, goes back to school and gets pulled in the office by the principal to be told that he faked it and they need to stop, why would you scare everyone like that, cost the school more money? Um, because they had to call the ambulance and I did get billed for that, for the ambulance call, which they took care of that when I called them. Um, there was another instance. Um, the kids were in the hall, um, doing like a video for like Veterans Day and another kid had made spit boards with lead, pencil lead in it and was spitting it at him and hit him in the leg and he yelled, ow, or that hurt or something, to that effect. And, well, mine got joined in the office for the rest of that and wasn't allowed to participate after that. Um, at one point, I did not take him to school, I brought him to Hamlin. I was going to transfer him to Hamlin School because I'm really done with Guy Valley at that point. And they said they didn't have room. I was like, fine. So we left there. We went back to Guy Valley. I dropped him off. Um, we went in, I think it might have been second, second period by that time. And when he got in there, he was asked to take his backpack off because they didn't want anything taken from the classroom. And so he said, so you're calling me a thief? Teacher said, no, we just had other students taking things. So he left it up there. And then I think it was closer to the last period, um, he plays basketball, that's his name, um, very good at it. Well, he was in class that same day and threw a, wanted a piece of paper and threw it in the trash can, or actually threw it to another student, like a basketball, to throw in the trash can. The teacher started yelling at him for it, which shouldn't have been thrown paper, but that's fine. Um, and then another kid stands up and tells the teacher, yells at the teacher, you need to leave that trans homophobe alone. My kid got in trouble for that piece of paper, but that other kid didn't get in trouble for that. Um, there's so much on here. My kid's usually in the office probably four times a week. Um, got suspended once for bumping hips with another student in the hallway because they were goofing off. So, guess it's going to do that. Last year, kicked off the basketball team for something that he did not do. Another child even admitted that, um, she did it all. Um, so the principal said, well, your kid can be a sore on the team and now your kid can be one off the team. Um, the principal up there has put my child, put me down to my child about my job because I work at a gas station. Um, there was a teacher, a man teacher up there, Miles had his head down on the desk and I guess they're not allowed to have their head down in that class, I'm not sure that's what Miles said. Um, he snatched him by his neck completely up out of his seat and was down in the office for about two hours. We never got a call home, even when my kid kept telling them over and over, call my mom, would not allow the call. Um, we found out once he got home that it happened. So we called up there and she said, we're investigating it. We never heard anything back until more things happened at school. And then I called over here for board, talked to, um, speaking about it and found out that this teacher was no longer allowed to teach up there, which didn't really, didn't make me feel much better. So does that mean he gets to teach somewhere else to do it again? Nothing was ever done about that. I don't know much more than he's not allowed to, um, teach up there. And I guess other places, I guess, I don't know if he's allowed to teach anywhere else. I don't see the difference in him being in that school and doing it to a child and being somewhere else. And a lot of things that bother me too is my child is gay and I'm raising my kids that if you're gay, I don't care. I love you and I'll always support them no matter what. Um, if they get a date out of their race, I got their backs on that too, doesn't matter. So whenever Miles got to middle school, didn't have a problem coming out about being gay because I've taught them that that's okay. Well, it's not okay up there because the staff, the principal and a lot of the teachers have a huge issue with my kid being gay. Even when Miles would do something that did permit going down to the office, whatever it may be, it always came back to him being gay. Over and over and over, we've heard so much. Um, there's just so many things. I can't even keep up anymore. Um, that covers most of that. Um, I'm trying to think. Like whenever we went to the meeting about writing the name Miles on a folder, the, I wasn't in that meeting five minutes and I was already being screened at. I had plenty of reasons to screen when I went up there. And I'll be honest, when I did go up there, that was my intentions. It really was, I'm not going to lie. But I didn't. But I wasn't there more than five minutes and I was already being yelled at by the principal during that meeting and telling me how my kid's confusing everyone in the school. And so my, my son now was born female, like I said, and at that time, the born name is Gabrielle Paige Hager. Well, my kid's never gone by the name Gabrielle from birth. We've always called by the middle name Paige. Um, so after that meeting, um, the principal made sure she informed all the teachers to no longer even call my child Paige, to go ahead and call my child Gabrielle to go ahead and add insult to injury to that. There's just so, so many things. I just, I have an IPH letter here, things that I kept track of that I'd be more willing to bring you all a copy and like people. So, um, we have, um, it's not only my kid that's being bullied. The little girl that took her own life up there, when she just turned thirteen years old, she took her own life from being bullied and absolutely nothing was done. At one point, she reported, told, um, the counselor herself that she was going to take her own life and was told, stop with the drama and got lunched detention because she wouldn't stop saying it, talking about taking her life. Um, nothing was done about that. Um, and that's my son's best friend that, um, took her own life. Um, the Friday before that happened, um, according to a good friend of my son's, our grandmother said that she reported that the little girl had said, made comments about taking her own life on Friday. One of her friends reported to the principal about it and the principal said there was nothing she could do because, um, she hadn't done anything yet. Well, Saturday night, she took her own life. Her mother wasn't notified and nothing up there. Um, then I got a phone call, my husband and I got a phone call, that we needed to search our kid's room for notebooks with, um, suicide plan and that our child's in a suicide pact. And we needed to come to the school because our child had a plan to take his life. So then when I get to the school, that wasn't true. There were no notebooks of that for my child. Only notebooks that my child had was the ones that I had given him to hike in, how you're feeling. It was more a journal, not a suicide pact with anybody. So a lot of people in our community now believe so. My child was in a suicide pact and my child was not. Um, they wanted me to, um, put my kid in River Park. I didn't do that and I'm not going to do that because my child's grieving over his best friend. Um, I didn't do that, so they called CPS on me for that. And the fact that my child was confused about my kid was confused about their sexuality. Why that's a reason to call CPS on me, I don't know. But I do know this, that if I, in my home as an adult, in my home, was picking on my child for being gay or any of these things, they don't want to take my kid out of my home because that's abuse. That is abuse by me or anyone else. I would allow my mom to do that. So the school to me is no different. And they need held accountable up there for the things that they're doing and the way that they're making these kids feel. And they have a responsibility. So, I just think there needs to be a lot more done. And right now, we're doing homebound because that was the solution for my child. Let's do, it was homeschool or homebound. So my child lost out on basketball again and now can't even hang with any of the friends that he has left because now we're on homebound. Because I cannot keep sending my kid up there to be picked at and just prodded at every single day at that school and then absolutely nothing be done. And I've reported to that school, I've asked for meetings, I've got a couple. I called over here. I've exhausted everything I know to do anymore at this point. But that's the biggest issue that we have, is no matter what my child does up there, it goes back to being gay. And I don't have an issue with my kid being gay. I don't know why anyone else does either because it's not their child for one and it's not their place to tell my kid who to be and who not to be. That's all. So thank you.
Hey, Ms. Hager, we, uh, once again, all the things that have been discussed this evening have been noted. Uh, I'm sure, uh, Mr. McKeef will be dealing with some of those, some of these that we may talk about privately too. But as we started this whole, uh, discussion tonight, as I said then, uh, as difficult as it may be at times, you have to complain, uh, pile of complaints. You've got to let somebody know. If you don't feel comfortable doing it with your teacher, the principal, whoever, do it anonymously. And you can state all the factual information in there, um, that comes in and, uh, you know, nobody knows where it comes from, but it will be investigated and dealt with then. But, uh, you know, we certainly sympathize with what you're dealing with here. Um, and I don't know that we really can because we don't have to deal with it as you do, uh, at home each day and the, the effect it has on your kids or your families. But, um, you know, we want to do what we can to eliminate it if possible. That may not be possible, but we want to, uh, do as much as we can to, to help your concerns and try to do, stop it. Uh, there are certain things that we've done, been mentioned here as far as supervision and all, but it, you know, those are easy tips as far as I'm concerned. Other things are more difficult. You know, kids are going to call kids names and those kinds of things. It's hard to monitor all those things. It can happen on the bus, it can happen anywhere. But if, if they do happen, they have to be, somebody has to be told about them. It might be the bus driver, whoever it is, so that some action can be taken. But, uh, we know it's serious and we take it seriously. So we just appreciate you coming in and telling us because we've heard, you know, some of these things, once again, we've heard about some of these details. Many of them, we haven't, you know, don't have any knowledge of whatsoever. So we appreciate you taking, uh, you know, being courageous enough to come and, and share your lives with us and tell us what you've said tonight. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to finish, we're going to, we're going to go on to some other things, but we're not offended if you don't want to say. But you're welcome to say.
I want to take about five minutes.